Call the Board of Selectmen meeting of July 16th at 7:00 PM to order. And I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we get into the, the public comments, one, a moment of silence for a long time Hebron resident and a longtime Hebron friend, a person who was involved in many, many aspects of the town. He was actually a member of the Board of Selectmen and he was also stating, and I'll let him go on with some of the things that, that Mr. Hibbard, John Hibbard was involved with. Did you want to kind of fill us in on some of the things that you remember?
Yeah, he was, um, he was a person that set the bar high. He was an example of what a volunteer and a gentleman in the town of Hebron should be. He was instrumental in securing the first purchase of open space, which was the Grayville Park, instrumental in many other boards and commissions, open space, Parks and Rec, Board of Selectment. So he continuously volunteered and gave a lot of his unselfish time to the town of Hebron. So I think it's only appropriate that the President Board of Selectment recognize him for all this tireless, effortless work that made Hebron a better place to live.
As I say, he was, he was a great friend, a mentor, and Hebron, Hebron will miss him. I ask that we please do a moment of silence for John. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else they wanted to state of their remembrances of Mr. Hibbard?
Yeah, I knew him on Open Space and before that. And, um, you know, I think the one thing that's, it's, it's hard to remember, but you know, Open Spaces was, uh, was not popular back 40 years. It's, and it's, it's not, we don't, other towns actually don't have it for a lot of reasons. But, so we're lucky to have it and he's one of the people that persuaded the taxpayers to come out and actually, you know, put, put money aside, not an easy argument. So the whole Open Space program, um, we have a lot to, um, he, he was fundamental in putting it together. So I thank him for that and he's a nice guy too.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Thank you. As I say, he will be missed. Uh, again, as we get in, before we get into the good to know, I know Andy had a couple of items that he wanted us to consider adding. So did you want to go with those, Andy?
Yeah. What I would like to do is have the Board of Selectmen consider adding a couple of items to the agenda. This is something I don't normally do, but the way the timing of these notices came out and the short turnaround time that we're going to have to apply and submit for two grants, I think it's imperative that we discuss and try to take action tonight. So I can put approvals from this Boards of Selectmen's meeting into the grant application. And I'll get into the meat and potatoes a little bit later in the meeting. But the first item is there's another round of steep grants out. We just got notified this month on the 13th and the grants due August 14th. So I would like to add that item if the board agrees to 7C.
Okay. Anybody have any objections to adding that?
No.
Hearing none? I think we're set on that, Andy.
Okay. And then there's another grant we just got notified through a webinar this week. And this is for, um, it's an historic grant and I'll talk about this a little bit more underneath the Town Managers Report. Or actually we have, we'll add it to the gen, I'll just talk about it there. We could add that to 7D.
Okay. And again, anyone have any objections to adding that item?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none? Okay. So with that, I believe now we're into a public comment. Donna, is there anyone wishing to address the board with public comment?
There are no public comments indicated at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, Andy, back to you with the good to know? Or whoever?
Yes. So on here we have good to know. Um, I was hoping that Carla and some of the, um, Gail's husband, Jack.
I think he's there somewheres. I thought I saw him.
Right. There's, there's been some conversations from the public. So we thought it'd be a good idea under the Hebrew Business Spotlight and Public Service Announcement that we talk about the presidential primary and the absentee ballots. I think that if the Board of Selectmen agree, that's a good topic that we could get some of that information out.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's critical. A lot of people have a lot of questions, concerns, and I was hoping to get more guidance, if you will, from the state. But, you know, reading that, that mail-in ballot request form left me with as many questions as I think as I got answers. So.
We've been fielding quite a bit of calls. People did receive that in the mail with pretty much no notice and were, some were confused and looking for more information about what it is and what they should do. And so therefore, Jack has agreed to speak. I'm not sure if Carla's on the call or not, but if not, we can start with Jack if he's ready, Gil.
Uh, Jack?
Yeah, okay. Well, as you know, Carla is down, town clerk handles the absentee ballots. And as the picture you see up there, that box is going to be installed at the front entrance to Town Hall where people can drop their official ballot off. I think Carla's already received about 500 Democratic request for absentee ballots came back. And I think maybe 100 Republican ones. So, so things that, you know, while moving along, I mean, she has some new scanning equipment that's state supplied in order to read the numbers of the ballot. And I think it's a pretty secure system. Also unfortunately, we're also going to have to have the polling place opened at Hebron L on primary day and we have no idea what to expect there. We have a lot of PPE equipment available for us. And hopefully I think most people will take advantage, at least they'll open, of the absentee ballot. So we're not going to have too many people showing up at the primary. The other thing, the November election, none of us have any idea what's going to happen. The, you know, the state, the governor, Secretary of State seem to be on a different page. And I think they're waiting for the state legislature to come back in the session. And hopefully that they might, would go all mail-in for the November election. So we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, bringing people out on the election day. But I mean, that's basically how it stands now. We're in the, uh, the part of, you know, waiting for the absentee ballots to come in in two minutes and a half.
Okay. Uh, I don't know, John or Peter, Gail, Mark, anybody have any other questions or, uh, concerns?
I'll make a comment, Dan. I, in spite of everything that we read with people talking about absentee ballots being subject to fraud, I think we're much better off with the mail-in ballots. Of course, Jack is responsible for a lot of my knowledge, but I really do think it's a safe and secure system. And I would like to see November go that way. I think it'll be less chaotic. But I don't expect it to happen.
Now, how are you set for poll workers, Jack?
Well, that's the problem. We don't know how many to bring out for the primary. The, uh, the state has relaxed the standards a lot. And so we could probably do it with, you know, three poll workers. You know, we no longer have to have Republican, Democrat sitting side by side. You know, we can have one clerk, one ballot clerk and one machine tent. And, you know, as, as we, we probably will, hopefully we'll have a small turnout of Hebron L on primary day. So I don't, I think we're pretty good on poll work as the state keeps sending us out. You know, you need help on poll work as we can get you, we can bring a national bill out. And we, you know, we don't, we don't see any need for that. We're going to be able to handle staffing locally.
Okay. And I'm assuming.
You know, as far as, I just want to say about, you know, people, we're hearing a lot of things that absentee ballots allow for a lot of fraud. And nobody who works in elections, and I, you know, I've been 10, over 10 years in elections. And I know people a lot more experienced than me. No one thinks that there's any real opportunity for fraud in, in the absentee ballots. It doesn't increase it at all.
So I, um, I lived in Oregon for a couple of years. My wife went to University of Oregon Law School. So in Oregon is entirely mail-in ballots. And I got to tell you, it's, it is a great system. There was never question of fraud, but what's really great about it is that you, they mail out a, a voter pamphlet that anybody can put their opinions on. And it's like this thick and your ballot and you start going through, you see other people's opinions. They, you know, the Democrats, Republicans all have positions. You know, that makes sense. That does make sense. If you fill out your ballot, you can either do it on an election day, take it to the polls or you can mail it in and it works. No, no problem.
Yeah, I know that the states that, you know, there are four states that do mail and all mail. And then mailing actually eliminates what we call an absentee ballot. Because everybody's getting it and, you know, and I, I think it's the way to go in the future. It's just like early voting where you can send your ballots in early and we just, you know, we just store them and we don't count them until election day, but that, that works out pretty well too.
I would assume it goes without saying that anybody going to do in-person voting, are they, are they going to try to limit? Hey, keep the spacing between people and then limiting the number of people, you know, in the door? Has any of that been discussed? I know you're talking about PPE equipment. And I'm assuming that people coming to vote will have to have masks on at a minimum.
Okay. I discussed it with Andy that, you know, we might need help on public works and putting down the six feet mark between people. As far as masks go, the state is in a voluntary mask type thing. So as it stands right now, we can't tell somebody that they have to put a mask on to come to the ballot place.
Oh. Okay. Why am I surprised?
We're gonna, we're gonna work on that with the superintendents. There's a cleaning protocol that's got to be in place. And then we'll also have a reopening or preliminary meeting with the Chatham Health District to make sure what we're doing is what we're supposed to be doing.
Right. The state has a cleaning contractors that they're going to be sending in to clean up after the election?
Well, I'm, I don't, I, I, I just kind of assumed that masks would have been mandatory for personal protective clothing or equipment to go into the building to vote with. But I guess I'm wrong.
Well, it's not what the law says and, uh, they, and there's someone, there's someone even brought up the thing about, you know, taking people's temperature when they go in and then, and I know some stores do that and, you know, doctors offices do that. And then someone brought up the thing, oh, well, that's practicing medicine without a license, which I think would be stretching the point. But these are the type of things, discussions that come up. We, we have, uh, you know, conference calls with the Secretary of State and Ted, Ted Bromley and Dan Bates, the Assistant Secretary of State. And, uh, no, and there's, you know, a question and answer period. And some of the questions were getting, you know, really off the wall that people bring up. But that's why.
Okay. Well, um, are there, is there going to be anything in the paper the week prior to, Andy, you think? With any kind of updates or changes or anything?
Absolutely. We'll do, um, probably put it on our Facebook page, the town website, and we'll talk to the newspapers when we get closer to it. Cause believe it or not, we're fielding some calls from the residents that don't think it's a good idea. And they don't like change. They want their in-person voting and they're pretty adamant about it. We're going to have to educate the people.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions or?
I can check out them?
Thank you very, very much.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Next would be, uh, Town Managers Report.
Okay. Okay. So what we've been working on is, of course, we're closing out the end of the fiscal year. We'll have all that information for the next Board of Selectmen's meeting. We did finalize the audit finally. We're already starting our new schedule of auditing for this year. But I'm working with the Finance Director and we should next week do our to-from and to-go transfers and we'll figure out where we are end of the year. Working with the schools as well on that. Um, I don't know if there's any questions on that. If not, I can move on to the next item. So Rich Colarco has given us notice that he's going to be retiring in January of this year. So I'm going to be working with the Parks and Rec Commission and see how they want to proceed. Rich has actually even given some sort of proposal where he would be willing to stay on in a certain capacity just to take care of the field, um, plans and, and maintenance. But we'll, we'll look into that. We'll keep you posted. But he let his commission know this week that as of January, he'll be retiring his employment as Parks and Rec Director.
How many years did he put in?
You know, I don't, I don't have that on the top of my head. I think it's over 15. I'm not sure if Donna has that number. We don't, I didn't look that up.
He's been here as long as I've been here, Andy. So I came here 15 years ago and he was here when I got here.
I think it's between 15 and 20.
I think you're right, Andy.
Thank you. So we'll keep you posted on that. Um, so tax collection is going very well. I asked for an update from the tax collector. Donna's been kind enough to put it up on the screen. So it seems to be successfully waiting on our taxpayers. For the most part, our residents are adhering to and understanding of our safety protocols. So the building and coming in at a six-foot distancing and wearing the mask there. For the most part, adhering to that's going, it's going well. There's been a steady flow of people wishing to pay now and not take advantage of the extended grace period. I think this is a good indicator of our community's financial health. So early on, when we agreed to, or the Board of Selectmen agreed to give that extension to the residents, there was one concern about cash flow. So with what she's got indicated here, we're not, we're not going to have an issue with cash flow. She's got it listed there as of July 1 through July 7th, that week. What she took down with the breakdowns and then the week of July 8th through July 14th. So money's coming in, which is a good thing. People are paying their taxes and they're not all taking advantage of that extension. So that's going to help us out in running the town. Just to let it be known, we're still going to look to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance once we close out the end of the year. I'm dealing with the quasi-government associations, which are CCM and COST. And we're feeling out all the other municipalities in Connecticut and dealing with the state officials to see if this is an appropriate time to do some sort of soft freeze moving forward until we have a better indicator of what we're looking at for finances coming down from the state. Excuse me. So we're working on that, but that's a good indicator from the tax factor thus far. I don't know if there's any questions regarding that.
John, you're, you're muted. There you go.
So, um, soft freeze, that's a good idea to consider, I think. Would you consider it because of tax collection or just because of the forecast, state forecast?
The forecast, John. I, I think we would do it either way as far as the tax collection's going. And that's just a bonus and we're happy to see that. But I still think with the amount of time people are laid off and not, business is not open and stuff. I, I think it's, it's pretty well known. It's going to be a ripple effect.
Yeah. So I saw, just, I saw a, I was in a webinar with the Yukon Economics Professor and a bunch of other people, but it seems like February of next year is when the state is really going to hit a critical point. And so something to plan for, I think. Not a good critical point either.
Okay. So we're, we're in union negotiations with the Supervisors Union. I'm going to take that back up next week. That's been kind of on hold because of the COVID-19, but we're, we're back at it. Hopefully finalize that and get something to you guys for approval. We sent out the open space grant, so hopefully we're going to be successful with that. That was finalized and completed last week. Thank you to Michael Leary for all his hard work. And then as I stated, I'll bring it up later in the agenda that we got a new round of steep grants. The, what we're accustomed to in the past, a steep grants had a $500,000 monetary value. This year they're only offering $128,205. And also that changes the criteria on what you can apply for. So when we get into it later on in the agenda, I'll tell you what we're proposing and why. And hopefully, once I get done with that, the Selectmen will understand why we're doing what we're doing. And then therefore, if we do get the grant, we can move some other monies around. There's a match from the municipalities this year for the project, which is something that's never been done on a steep grant, and they don't have what the percentage of the match is. And we've been going back and forth all this week with OPM, trying to get those answers. And we're getting there, but it's pretty clear. We got to be creative and we have to pick a project that's going to rate high. So I think, I think we're on to it, but I'll explain that later. As I stated, the audit's done. We're starting with the new audit firm to set up dates and times. And then we're just working with the businesses and the, and the public. There's been some concerns about some operations and Steve Knopf has done a great job and gone out there and assisted in a few areas where we've gotten some complaints and everybody seems to be compliant once we go out and talk to them. So we continue to do that. And the latest event that's coming forward is Ted's normally has a car show, take cruise at their plaza, but because of what's going on, it's probably not safe. So they worked with the Lions Club and I've been helping them with that. So they finally agreed last night, the Lions Club, I mean, they're going to have a big car show at the Lions Fairgrounds. They're going to have the cars 10 feet apart. They had Chatham Health involved. Steve Knopf went to the meeting. So they're going to permit it and they're going to have social distancing, masks and things like that. But it looks like between the Lions Club and the group from Ted's that does these shows, they're pretty excited to be able to have something like this. So that's going to be in Hebron. Hopefully, it sounds like it's going to be a big attendance because there's not a lot of things to go to. So that's what I've been working on this week.
Okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, that'll get us into old business, uh, which again, the reopening, Andy, you want to talk about that or?
Yeah, we can talk about it quickly. Um, as you know, we opened up on July 6th and I think from all the indicators and the department heads, things have been going pretty well. We got most of the sneeze guards in. There was a couple of other stragglers like down at the public works and we're redoing a couple of other ones. We did them at the firehouse. But other than that, we've gotten our PPE. People are wearing their masks, they're signing in. As you saw the note from the tax collector, she's got a lot of traffic downstairs. We got one way in, one way out. That's working well for the most part. So, um, we had a meeting with Chatham Health last week and it was apparent that we were ahead of the curve compared to the other towns that are in the Health District with our plan. So not trying to pat myself on the back. I didn't know that until we got into the meeting. And other people had been installed, the sneeze guards or had the training done or had their plans done. So, yeah, a lot of people, when they call us up are surprised that we're open and people can come in. So I think we did it as soon as we could, but we did it safely.
Beautiful. Thank you. Next. Okay. This is our update on the Hebron Open for Business Task Force. Peter, did you want to handle this?
Yes, sure. Thank you. And if I may, Andy, I'm going to call on Donna as well during this to assist me since she's on the task force and has been doing quite a bit of work. So what you see before you, just because we're starting to accumulate a lot of activity is just, I'm not going to go through all this, but I'll highlight just a couple of things. This is the spreadsheet that we're working from. You see on the left, the activity and then the green are the things that we've accomplished, hit some due dates on, accomplished. And then the yellows are what we would highlight during our current weekly meetings of things that we are working on next. So I just want to highlight a couple of things and thanks to everybody for all their support and obviously for the town for their support and a lot of folks doing some good work here. And we're, we're pushing out some good, some good things. And so I want to just highlight a couple of things. Maybe Donna first, if you could, everyone's had a, had a look, I think, or maybe if you've been given the current view of the website.
Sure.
Donna, I'm sorry, I'm going to do, okay. Donna will pull that up and this is, this is just, it's an updated version. We're ready to, ready to go live with this this weekend. So that's the goal. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it and you have any comments, you've seen this before, but you know, the mission of what we're trying to accomplish and sort of an updated look with pictures. And then one of the things we'll highlight as we go forward and, and the appropriate links that, that bring you to different areas on the site. And then a couple of things to highlight as you look at the businesses that are starting to sign up and participate. So thanks to the EDC and their help and communication, working together. We contacted a number of businesses that have responded and are giving us permission to be on the website or joining our Shops Local Initiative. So a lot of good feedback so far. We've got some videos that are up and I know a couple more that are, that are coming. So you'll see that added as well. Our resource page, you know, we've gone through this before, highlighting Y Blue, you know, the town of Hebron, the Economic Development Commission, clearly the sort of the hub to the wheel here. So we want to make sure that we're working to complement the existing entities and structure that's already in place. So they're highlighting to, again, direct attention to the appropriate resources and then some additional resources below that. We're highlighting our Shops Local Program, which is also about to go live. And you'll see that in our events component and Scavenger Hunt. We've got a couple of fun sort of family activities and which we'll share when we go live. But some good response to the Shops Local Program. And then, um, you'll see here where, you know, we've got some, some updated photos and a place where we'll update this as we go, as we get, we're pushing a lot of the photos. We'll talk about Facebook in just a second, but we have an ability here to highlight some businesses and some things initially, but as we get people participating, you'll see this will start to be a dynamic page. We'll be adding photos of families and pets and things and businesses and other things. So this will be very much a dynamic page as we launch some of these events. So that'll, we'll continue to update this on a regular basis. You see some of the events that are coming up date. And then sort of in a traditional website fashion, you'll see contact information, some FAQs, which, you know, we'll continue to update as we get feedback from this site. I learned something new today about 211. So thank you, Donna, for that. Um, I learned something new today about 211, so thank you Donna for that, um, so. Um, some good information and we'll keep you guys updated in terms of what kind of reaction and feedback we get. So that's, uh, that's an update there, so if you do want to look at that between today and tomorrow, if you, if you're seeing something that jumping right out as if. It's not, you know, something you would want different, uh, by all means, give us a shout, it's easy to, to change the site and update it. So we went live with Facebook as well. Uh, so Donna, since you've really been the catalyst and, and manager of this piece of it, could you, uh, give the group a quick thumbnail sketch of what reaction you've gotten so far?
We, we went live with the Facebook, um, group last Wednesday night and we. Um, already received 230 some odd members and we're trying to encourage participation by. Hebron residents, visitors to town and the businesses and encouraging them to post pictures of visits to town. Um, the businesses to post pictures of their specials, their hours, what they're doing for safety. We're going to have feature on pets and share your pet photos when you're visiting town or videos. Um, information of the, the businesses to give us updates on, on what they're doing to keep us safe and to keep their. Their customers and their employees safe, so there's some videos also down below. And then we're sharing out any information that we get relative to activities in town or support for businesses during COVID. So if we learn of any webinars or seminars or any information that may help them, we're putting it out here. And we want it to be a participatory, um, page, so people. Can post or make comments or do whatever they want, we want it to be everyone's page, not just where we're giving out information. So that, that is about it, we encourage everybody to, if, if you're on Facebook, to join the group.
So some really good stuff, uh, out of the chute, you'll see our, our, if we go back to the, um, spreadsheet, Donna, then I'll finish up. But, uh, you know, we got our signs, uh, thanks to, uh. The commission who approved our, uh, sort of our approach to signs, signs being ordered, you'll start to see some signs around town, so look for those. Uh, we're planning a zoning commission, uh, met this week to approve our, our application, so we're moving forward on that. Um, and then again, if you, at any time, if you're interested in any of this. Detail in terms of sort of what's next, the biggest thing for us is really launching shops local, um, is really where it's kind of the rubber meets the road. Uh, with our businesses participating and, uh, and, and a program built around really providing some, some activity and, and. And some, some real deliverables, and so we'll keep you posted on that, but that's about. Uh, you'll see that's an August one date, so we're getting close to getting, uh, ready to launch that and. And so, uh, so more to follow, but making some progress and, um, if anyone has any feedback, uh, thoughts, comments, by all means, uh. Please, uh, continue to reach out and, um. And, uh, we'll provide an update or, you know, join us for every Wednesday at 6, for those that are not, aren't doing anything, you know, well, you know, join us if you want. Uh, but that's a quick update, any, uh, any questions?
Looks great. Looks great.
Making good progress, so. Appreciate the support and obviously the opportunity presented by the board of selectmen and then obviously with the town to. To help in any way we can, so, uh, getting good support and hopefully you'll start to, to see some more visibility associated with this project and. And we're getting good feedback from our businesses as well, so we're off to a big start, I think.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions, comments?
Great work, great work, thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Okay, uh, next.
Okay, if there's no other old business. We can move on to the public works request for a bid waiver for the chip seal services. With that. Uh, tasks and memo from Kevin Kelly, the public works director requesting a bid waiver for the chip seal on the old Colchester Road. And he's here with us today, if there's any questions regarding that. There's a motion in place, but, um. The memo states that the public works department is requiring a bid waiver for a portion of the chip sealing. Services that will be used this year's pavement treatments. The town will be contacting with Cormer Contract to provide rubberized chip seal for East Street and they are included on the state DAS bid. At the same time, we are requesting a 3H chip seal for Old Colchester Road. Where they are not the low bid for on the state of Connecticut's DAS bid, but we've offered the pricing. Uh, they've offered the pricing to match, it makes both logistical and timing sense to have one contractor complete both projects. And the prices are listed. So Kevin, I don't know if there's any questions. Or additions.
Well, you pretty much said it all, if anybody had any questions about the chip seal process, just, uh. Fair to be, we have to stockpile stone for, uh, the project, so it just makes sense to use one contractor and they're going to match the price. Which was only off by a couple cents, so I think it's a good, uh, makes good sense.
Now, is this anything similar to what was done at North End of Town or is this a different? Process?
The one I'm looking for the waiver on is the same thing that we use on Old Colchester Road. So we, that was done about five or six years ago and we want to put another coat on that. So that's the process we're using for Old Colchester, the other one is a rubberized chip seal. And I want to use on East Street. And the reasoning is it's a little more flexible. And there's a lot of pavement cuts and repairs out on East Street. But there's a lot of good thickness and I don't want to lose that, so I'm thinking that it, this would be a good candidate for that kind of, uh, treatment.
To, uh, add to that, to answer Danny's question, Kevin, he wanted to know if that's the same process that you used out on like Charles and Joel and it's not.
No, it's not, that was a cape seal, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'll read the motion and then I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in. Uh, move that in accordance with the purchasing policies waiver of competitive bid process attached. The Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the request for a bid waiver for paving on Old Colchester Road. And award the contract to Cormer Contract Incorporated. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, or is everybody ready to, uh, vote on this? Hearing nothing in the negative. Going down the line, uh, John?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Peter?
You, Casper, I.
Mark?
Mark, I.
And myself, yes. So motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the board of selectmen. Uh, we're just following protocols to adhere to the purchasing policy. It wasn't much of a price change, but thank you for doing that. Next is item 7B, which would be to award the bid for the cold in place recycling. The town of Hebron recently went out for an RFP for cold in place recycling and received two proposals attached, Kevin Kelly, the public works director. Is recommending the contract be awarded to the Gorman Group LLC. And I'll let Kevin speak to that.
And we have two roads in town that are candidates for this type of treatment. What it does is, uh, they go in and. Um, the two roads are Meeting House Road and Burn Hill Road. And these roads are both in severe distress. And so that gives us two choices on how to handle that, one is to go in, reclaim all the pavement, regrade it and pave it back at three and a half inches. The other is to use this type of treatment, which is to go in and mill down four inches of the existing pavement. Repulverize it. Add new aggregate if needed, Portland cement if needed and add emulsified asphalt. And it, we, it regrades, it's a long train, it regrades what's there. Um, after this is complete. Um, you wait a curing period of anywhere from 10 to 30 days and then you put an inch and a half of black top over the top to seal it. So I use this process in the past, it's, uh, done by many municipalities, but, um. We'd like to go ahead and award this to the Gorman Group, who we've worked with in the past, this is the same group we had a problem with, with the cape seal. Years ago, a couple of years ago, but, uh, we've worked with them on this process, so. We'd like to go ahead and approve this RFP.
Okay, again, I'll read the motion and then open it up for discussion. Uh, and then move forward with it. Uh, proposed motion, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the contract for cold in place recycling. RFP number 2020-10 to the Gorman Group LLC. For the RFP proposal form submitted. Uh, as, as I say, open it up for, for discussion.
Are these the guys that screwed up on Jan Drive?
Yes, it is, it's the same, same company.
It's a different. Go ahead, John.
Did we have to sue them or something?
We had a settlement. Go ahead, Andy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we ended up settling that and they, they did right by us, so we came back in and repaired the other roads and, uh. We did a different process and they, um, awarded some money back to us to pay for that. But they have, um, multiple. Units for different applications, this is something totally different, uh, it's a different crew, different machinery. Um, and Kevin can jump in, there's not a lot of companies that do this process, there's only like two or three. And, uh, these are the, uh, this is their specialty when it comes to that, they've been doing it for a long time. And, um, we had used Gorman for many, many years and never had a problem, there's no hiding that we had a problem with them. With that la, last, uh, process we went through, but, uh. He, he's called me and, uh, I think we've moved on from that and like I said, this is a totally different process.
That was just an odd thing where the oil failed and wouldn't, uh, grab onto the stones that, in that process the last time. So there was something wrong with their oils that particular time, so. As I say, a free.
So Kevin, you feel confident using them then?
Yeah, I do, actually, um, I've used them in the past for this process when I worked over in Colchester. If you drive down Old Hebron Road in Colchester where it comes into, uh, Old Colchester Road, that's the same process that was used. And that was, had to be a dozen years ago, we did that.
Uh, is Peter, there are there other roads that would qualify this, but just are in a different? Sort of level of prioritization, so is this something that we'll see? But on a continuous basis, this process, or is this very specific to the condition of these two roads?
I think it's pretty specific to these two roads for now. Um. Might see it again if, uh, nothing comes about on, um. Martin Road, but I'm still hoping the best for that grant that we applied for, so. For right now, I think these two roads are the best candidates.
Thank you.
Which road are they, sorry?
Meeting House and Burn Hill.
Both off East Street.
And they're very distressed roads and the only other option we'd have is to reclaim and regrade them, they're in tough shape, both of them.
Yeah.
That would be a lot more expensive to do that.
Yes, be a lot more.
Meeting House has, has major, like rivulets or something, it's terrible.
And Kevin, the reason you're doing these roads with that process, this is coming out of that bonded money, right?
That's correct. We started working on the projects that are associated with the bond. Um, the first being that parking lot up at Gillian, we just completed that. And now we're going to be moving into the parking lot over at Hebronell. And that's another part, part of that bond project and then, uh. This will be ongoing for a couple of years. Um, we have a couple of other major roads that we want to do. Any other questions?
As I was saying, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, John?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Peter?
You, Casper, I.
Mark?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, if you're all set with me, I'll sign off.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is where we added those items. So this would be, um, 7C and this is in regards to the steep grant. And I got a little bit of backup, I'm going to have to walk you through this, so. As I stated earlier, a new round of steep grants have come out. I've been working on this, uh, as soon as it came out on the 13th with, um. Michael Leary and Tom Fenton, the town's consulting engineer. So I've got some bullet points and once I slowly go down so you guys can absorb what I'm. Relaying to you. I have an idea with this short timeframe, hopefully, you know, everybody will agree, but if you don't, that's, that's your prerogative, so. Um, we don't normally operate like this, they normally give you a little bit more of a timeframe where I could. Really vet the projects out with the board of selectmen and then move forward, so. I don't want you to think that this is anything that we normally do, but with this short turnaround time, it's kind of something we're going to have to. Move on, so this was a memo today from Michael Leary. Uh, and it says, Andy, so. In the brief time that we, you and me and the town engineer have. To look at this steep grant round with the new rules in place, here are some of the thoughts. Some important steep grant guidelines, one is the announcement was July 13th and the grant deadline is August 14th. So the maximum grant award, which I also explained, is only 128,205. There's, in this round, there is a municipal match that's required. But no minimum amount is specified, OPM guidelines is that the higher the local match will increase the project ranking. The municipal match cannot be municipal salaries. The municipal match can be funds spent on design and engineering. Funding for the entire project has been secured. And steep funds only pay on a reimbursement basis. The grant is for capital projects. Some of the priority project areas have to be shovel ready, promoting economic growth, improving quality of life and infrastructure. There's a two-year time limit on the project with possibly a one-year extension. So. You know, with everything going on, I think the governor wanted to do something with steep. And they kind of scrambled and threw this out there kind of fast, so. We had a couple of projects that were in the budget. One was the bridge at the library, which we didn't have any funding for, we didn't even fund a portion of that. But what, and talking to Mike, what I could propose. Is what would fit this criteria and this is the port, this is the important part that the selectmen have to understand. You have, this is a competitive process, you have to put a project that really nails. Uh, the priority in the project areas, so I'm pretty sure. That if we were to submit the Wall Street sidewalk that we've already funded, we have the match for that. We can move forward with that, it's shovel ready. And then if we do get the grant, you can repurpose the monies that we funded the sidewalk with previously in the budget to something else of your choice. So what I'm really trying to say in a nutshell is, we've only got less than a month turnaround time to get this thing out. That's a project that I know we could just nail it, um, write up a very objective, uh, grant proposal, regional high school, safety. Connect, connectivity with the school and the, the community on Ridge Road. So. We're trying to think outside the box, as Brian O'Connell once told us to do. So I'm thinking in order to get the grant, if we put in for that sidewalk, which we've already approved and the funding's there for, and then we get the grant. We could take the monies you guys already approved and repurpose it to a project of your liking. I don't know if I'm talking too fast or if that makes any sense.
It makes, makes great sense. That's a good idea.
I agree with you too, Andy, because you know I don't want to pay for that sidewalk out of town money. I'm, I'm, I'm supporting it a hundred percent, we'll find some other use for the money, I'm with you.
I'm, I'm in favor of it because we need to get that sidewalk done and then we have the money for. Moving to something else that is desirable.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, pretty creative, uh, on your part, Mike's part, to think about how we can take advantage of it, so there really is no. Risk in moving forward as proposed, it's, there's. risk in moving forward as proposed. It's, there's only upside. So I would absolutely suggest that we, we move forward with that one. Support moving forward with that one.
I agree, which I believe would make it unanimous. Uh, and as I say, if we were to get that grant and that become, that gets taken care of that sidewalk project, then we could look at other items in the CIP uh, list that we were not able to fund and possibly handle some of those. Uh, so I, I, I think it's, it's a common sense approach and uh, I think we have a very good chance of getting it. And I think it sounds like everybody's in favor for you to move forward with that, with that plan.
I bet you a lot of towns in the area aren't, aren't going to be able to respond because the ambiguity is tied to the matching part, which they hadn't previously funded in projects. It may be hard for them to pull this together. So the fact that we're sort of ready with this could be a potential advantage uh, in terms of those that are applying. So.
Mike is, Michael Leary, the town planner is very competitive. So we've already discussed if you guys were to approve this, how to write it up and we have the full match. Um, that'll, that'll give us points. It, it's, it's a continuity. It's safety. It's the regional school. We're nailing all the big bullet points. So you get all the uh, the points you need to score high. Um, and there's nothing wrong with us taking our money back that we've already allotted for that and repurposing it. So I think the best chance to get an award is that project. And then like I said, as soon as that happens, we would come back to you guys for uh, your guys' input on what you wanted to spend that money. But I would, I would need that motion read.
Well, I think a lot of other, I think a lot of other towns are just taking rejected proposals and redo, redoing them. I know. Um, Andover is gonna submit something on their town, their community center. But this sounds like a winner. So yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
Uh, move the Hebrew Board of Selectment authorized a preparation, application for the Small Town Economic Assistance Program. Steep Grant Funds for the Wall Street Sidewalk Project. Uh, again, John?
John Collins, aye.
Gail?
Gail says aye.
Peter?
You're Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark, aye.
And Daniel, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I don't like to work under those tight uh, timeframe constraints. It's, it's, it's normally tight enough the way they had it before, but this is almost ridiculous, but we'll get it done. Okay, next item is what I added would be seven D. So this just recently came to light um, earlier this week too. So this is another memo from Mike and it says, Andy, here's a grant application to hire professionals, architects, engineers, et cetera, to look at historic buildings to come up with a restoration plan. Would just be something of interest for the town to team up with Judy and the new arts council of the town center project and come up with a plan for that barn by Matt McCorsons. And what, what we'd be looking this grant to do is supply architectural and engineering designs. I don't think we're trying to say that we're gonna take ownership of that barn. I think we're looking to apply for a grant to assist them with possible renderings and um, plans and cost estimates of what it would do to convert that into what they want. Donna has it up on the board. Thank you, Donna. So it's a vibrant community initiative, grant funds for community historic action plans. And Mike went to the seminar.
I was gonna say, it, it, to me, it makes sense. Um, and I do know that Judy was very passionate about uh, trying to do something with that barn and some sort of arts and, and culture uh, diversity type project would be benefit, I think, to Hebron. Uh, definitely to the, to the uh, arts people of the town. Um, and we have done things like this in the past. Yeah, we did it, you know, for the old silverware where we had gotten money to help to look into the uh, pollution and, and what had to be done to make that a viable uh, building. So it's uh, it's not uh, on, or it's not new territory that we would go for a grant for something like this. Um, John or Gail, somebody?
Oh, I'm definitely want to speak up on this one. I've always been interested in the Arts Commission. I think the barn is an ideal place for us to get a structure for an arts commission. And this grant seems to be a good gateway for us to start getting it done. So yes, I am very much in favor of it.
Andy, I have a question for you.
That.
Andy, is the money in the grant just for architectural design and coming up with a plan of how to reproduce that building or restore that building for fifty grand? Another twenty grand, I could build that thing into a brand new post and beam. Why are you wasting all that money on architects?
That's uh, I, I hear your point and that's, that's how I read this grant. That's um, that's what they're allotting for this. Um, and that's the project that came to mind. Uh, and trying to help them out. They're trying to do a good thing. So I wanted to bring it. This project, even though the due date is similar uh, of August fourteenth, this is something we can still bring back and put on the next agenda, which would be, I believe, August sixth. Yes.
Um, I just don't get what, I don't get what they're gonna do, Andy. They're gonna come in for fifty grand and tell you, hey, let's build a historic center here. What, what do they do for fifty grand? Give you a plan? What do they do?
Well, um, it's funny, I was just walking by that today and I was, I looked at it as a, as I was coming from something simple, simple, Mark. Um, I was thinking, what a great, what a great place. If we could just get that building, it's just, it would build out the town center. I mean, it would be a tradition. It would be a, um, what, a, a place where people can go. But um, I think the, maybe the idea about getting an architect in there is um, it's, it's right now, it's, it's, it's not, it's not built for an art center. I mean, it's, it's
No.
You'd have to have a design for um, maybe an open space for um, for, you know, I, I don't know. Um, for viewing art or um, for a, a partial auditorium for, for performance, you know? So they would have those kind of ideas um, of taking that building and, and making it um, more usable.
I, I, I love those ideas, but to look at that building and to think as a post and beam builder and a restorer of buildings like that, to look at that building and say, let's fix this thing up to be what you want it to be, John or Gail. Um, what, would cost more than if you just tore it down and build a whole brand new one?
Yeah.
Um, I, if you want me to go look at it and tell you what I, are the timbers sound? Is the structure sound? Are the timbers um, meet the load requirements? Uh, is the siding on it gone? I mean, what, what do you need an architect to do that for? I could tell you in twenty minutes what, if that building is worth saving or not saving. I, I just, seems like a lot of money to have um, an architect come in for fifty grand and tell you, hey, this is what we can do with the thing. It's just my opinion.
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a maximum up to fifty thousand. Uh, a lot of the uh, requirements are on the screen now. Uh, you know, so this is something you really need to download, kind of review it. Um, but it does, it does fit what they are looking for. Uh, within the scope of those types of structures that would fit this.
Well, but what are we looking for, Dan and Andy? Are we looking to restore that building and preserve it? Or are we looking to create that same building with, with modern timber framing? That's safer and more stable and probably would be cheaper to do. What do, what are we trying to do?
Well, part of this though, you gotta get into the Historic Properties Commission. Uh, you know, what their responsibilities are when it comes to uh, historic buildings and historic properties. And I'm not gonna speak for the commission. Uh, but in order to be listed as a historic property, there are certain parameters. Um, so it may be something that we would need a representative from them to kind of help to outline uh, what requirements there are for this type of structure. And, and I, I just, I say, I, I do not know. Um, so I don't want to, I don't want to say something and then have it be wrong because that's easy for me to do.
Okay.
And so. All right, go ahead, Peter.
Finish your thought. I, I just, I'd like to ask something after you're done, Mark. Go ahead, keep finishing.
So I mean, Judy's been looking at this building for, for a couple of years now and um, you know, and, and there's a price on it and she's thought about how to, how to buy it and, you know, because the town's not gonna do it, but you know, citizens could, could come up with it. It's not that much. But why buy, why buy it if it's, if it's not worth, you know, renovating? So I mean, this, this gives a push to, to finding out whether it's worth it, you know, whether the project's worth it. And also, and I guess the other thing I'd say is, is you know, I've, I've, you know, we've, we've had many additions where we've just had builders come in and do things. One addition we did our, our house, we had an architect come in and I gotta tell you something, it made all the difference in the world. I mean, they, they were just, they were great. And they were expensive, but um, so I don't know. I
Architects, architects aren't timber framers. They're, 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 you don't learn how to timber frame in architectural school. It's a whole different art.
Isn't there a, a, a whole branch of, of, of architects that, that do um, old houses? I, I think
There's a few, there's a few, you'd find maybe three or four architects in all of New England that specialize in timber frames. It goes hand in hand with being a structural engineer and, but, but I like your point of why, why are we going forward with a project of something we don't even own or spend? I know it's a grant, but why, why would you waste, waste money on having a plan to fix a building you don't even own?
Well, that's the purpose.
Sense to me.
That's the purpose of this grant. This is to assist the municipality to help a nonprofit that is trying to do something with arts and culture, which uh, Hebron Center Project is trying to do. Judy's been pretty adamant about trying to do something with that barn. So uh, if you read this through, it says you can apply to up to fifty thousand dollars. That doesn't mean it's an automatic fifty thousand.
Right.
And it's not specific to architects, it's to engineers. So what they would do is you would be paying for their time to come in and meet with the committee and listen to them and say, all right, what are your visions for this building? And they would tell you not just on the structure or, or the, the integrity of the building or the siding of the roof. They would develop a plan with the um, the people, the vision and put it together and try to move that forward. So it's, that's how I envisioned this grant, trying to help with that process, not so much the structural integrity. Um, I'm sure that'll be one of the first things that comes up, but um, and I understand your expertise in it as well. Uh, Mark, but I think this is something to help that nonprofit get their vision started with some professional services that they can't pay for.
Okay.
Peter?
I, yeah, I just was uh, listening to all the good comments and, and I, my concern, and I'm listening and learning as I'm going here and briefly when I saw it, I'm looking for the meeting, but back to your point, Mark, it, it, we could be doing all this and then the building could be sold to somebody else, right? And so the end result is that, you know, to me, I would want to do this with a building we own and, and do that in conjunction with the Arts Commission. Because we could do all this, provide in essence a significant value to the owner who then sells it to somebody else. And we've got, you know, we've got nothing, right? Am I understanding that correctly? Is that a risk?
Yeah.
Well, that's a possibility, but like they brought up the, the um, the Tershen Mill, they brought that up. It's also an economic development driver and a cultural boost for your municipality. So like with the Tershen Mill, we applied for a grant that helped check the groundwater mediation uh, and, and help with that sale and help prospective uh, prospective buyers to come and say, oh, it's really not that bad. And this is, the mediation's only gonna be this much due to the, the new report that we had. So it's to facilitate things within the center of your town, increase arts and culture. And it's given the nonprofits an avenue to try to work towards that. So it, it would be the town assisting the center project to try to move forward on one of their visions. But you're right, that, that could, the, the, the plans or the assessment would come to, you know, the town and the, the entity that's trying to do this. And that building could be sold to somebody else. There's, there's no guarantee.
Where does the owner intersect in this process?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Where does the owner, uh, uh, what is the owner in this process? Because we have a, an arts commission who's interested in the building who doesn't own it. We have a town who's interested, you know, Hebron in, in developing additional data to support historic preservation and all that. And then we have an owner. And who has their own agenda. They have a post sales sign on it. So how, how does the owner kind of fit into this process and this grant application and sort of, I just don't know how it works. I'm just trying to better understand it.
Uh, the owner is uh, McCorsons and they, their first um, hope would be that the town would uh, partner with the Arts Commission and try to make something vibrant. He's been working with us right along. And we really, we really didn't have any seed money and that's kind of how we're looking at this for uh, seed money to try to take that vision that they have for that building to see if it's something that's feasible. And, and sit down and do a design and, and like John said, maybe some architectural renderings to see. Uh, that might just make this project take off and get some investors. Um, you know, we're trying not to have the town all, own all these historic buildings. So if we could try to help them out in this manner and somebody else actually uh, be the owners of that with support from the town, I think that's um, the flavor of.
What's the downside? What's the downside in doing, in, in, hey, you got thirty-five grand? What's the downside? Or what's the downside to this? I'm not hearing that.
The downside would be you'd have a plan and renderings to a building that you ended up not obtaining, I guess.
But the grant, so where is, so we have to match a certain amount of this? Is that what I missed?
No, no, I don't believe so. I think this is just a straightforward.
There's downside of time loss, but there's no, the town isn't gonna spend money. We're gonna spend the grant and yeah, it goes, it goes a different path because we decide, you know, that we can't, the buyer isn't had and then the building gets leveled and whatever it is, but there's no economic downside to the town other than a possibility that we could do something uh, with this in conjunction with the owner. Um, but we're not gonna spend taxpayer money and, and have that go to an owner who then sells it to somebody else. That's what I would be concerned about, but that's not what I'm hearing. It's you get the money, we use it. If it can facilitate the advancement of this project, great. If it doesn't, it was a good faith effort.
Right.
And then we move on.
Yeah. Is that even if, you know, it's, it will help make the property potentially more sellable. Uh, it will help potentially find people interested in the property once they see some of the things that could be done with it. So there really is no downside for the town. It's not costing us anything out of our, out of the taxpayer dollars. And it can only help to uh, assist in, in the development and revitalization of that area of our town. Um, so I, I, I don't see any kind of a downside to this. Uh, you know, the only downside may be that other people will see all of the potential of that space and you know, uh, the town center group and their arts commission lose it. Um, but this will at least help to give them information to know what direction to go.
Or somebody could complain, hey, why not my building, right? I mean, I had a really nice historic, historic building that you could, you know, someone could complain, right? I suppose that could be a risk that why did, why did you pick that building, not my building?
Well, it's gotta be a different office.
What's that?
Gotta be a nonprofit.
Okay, so there really isn't, there really wasn't a second choice then. This was
Uh, this is what popped up. This is coming from the
Alright, great. Well, thanks for providing all the detail.
It, it doesn't increase the value of the property. What it, I mean, because if you provide a, a plan, there's It, it doesn't increase the value of the property. What it, I mean, because if you provide a, a plan, there's a, a good chance it's going to show how expensive it is to, to renovate. So the actual value of the property is going to change. What it could do for the, for, for the Town Center Project is, is say, well, it's going to cost this much to renovate it. It's not worth the price. So it could have an impact on the price going down. So it's helpful for all of us to know, you know, how much is it going to cost to renovate? And is it worth, you know, trying to, to raise money to, to, you know, to buy the damn thing?
Right.
So it's not really doing much. I mean, it's good for, for the Town Center Project. I don't think it's, it really benefits the, the owner that much.
All right. So let's, let's, let's move to, uh, past the, the grant and Brian.
Okay. Well, uh, but the motion, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorized the preparation and application to the Preservation Connecticut Vibrant Communities Grant for up to 50,000 for assistance in preparing a community historic action plan. So going down the list, John?
John Collins, aye.
Gail?
Gail, aye.
Mark?
Mark, aye.
Peter?
Peter Kasper, aye.
And myself, aye. I forgot to throw, change it up a touch. Okay.
So next, next would be the, um, the agenda for the next meeting. But Donna sent me a text message and said Carla has joined us and she can give a quick update on that or add to that absentee ballot, um, we discussed earlier, if that's okay, whatever your pleasure is.
Sure. I don't, anybody have any issues with that?
Go ahead.
Okay, Carla, you're on.
So, um, I apologize. I completely, I completely just forgot about the meeting. So that's why I wasn't here and I beg.
Anymore.
I do, I do. But you know, I got lost in my garden and then all of a sudden I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm supposed to go to this meeting. So, um, thank you for your, you know.
Pleasant. Does that mean that's where we fall in your pecking order?
Yeah. So I missed what, uh, what Jack had to say. And I'm sure he, you know, really all we're trying to do is follow the new rules as best we can. And I think we have a handle on it. The, um, the voting will, the polling place will be open as usual. But people who want to vote by mail have that option if they're concerned for catching this virus. And it seems as though a lot of people are concerned about going to the polls. So really by the number of applications we have is unbelievable. So I mean, we're talking like 600, you know, and I wasn't in the office today, so I don't know how many came in the mail today. But the last time I spoke with Fran, she said there was actually two mail deliveries. And Donna has been our backbone, Donna Lanza. Thank you, Donna. I don't see a picture there. Because our scanners that we needed to get a new scanning, we needed to set up a scanning system to work with the state program in order to process these ballots through the state. It's called the Connecticut CBRS, Connecticut Voter Registration System. And they have a program that actually is going to track every single application and then every single returned ballot. So it's very, it's a very different for us. So trying to wrap our heads around the process is that we try to make sure in the beginning that everybody's address was correctly put into the compute, into the program that the state provides us. Then a clearinghouse mails out all the applications to every registered Democrat and registered Republican should have received an application. Now, when the person, the voter decides that they want to use the paper ballot, they return the application to our office. And all those applications have a barcode. So we needed to have scanners to read that barcode. Because we knew we were going to be promised, uh, processing hundreds of these when ordinarily we might process for a primary like this, maybe 50 or 60 of these for a primary. So, um, anyway, we ordered the equipment. We tried to get it to work and it didn't. The, the program itself on the state side was not up and running until Tuesday. It was supposed to be up and running on Monday. And on Tuesday, we got word that it was working, but when we tried to do the scanning, and when I say scanning, I mean, just like at the cash register at the grocery store, it's just a barcode and a wand. So when we tried to do that, it didn't work. So we called Donna, um, our go-to person. And she worked with the IT, um, group to, um, to get those up and running. And it turns out that there was a missing part on our scanners. Like Fran would have one at her desk and I would have one at mine. But somebody knew and I, my trusty colleague Fran remembered that we had a scanner from the old DEEP Sportsman Licensing System that we never used for that system. And so she said, well, let's try that. Lo and behold, it worked. So the IT people and Donna and Fran were able to get that up and running and Fran's been working on it ever since. I'm going in tomorrow to work with her a little bit to make sure that we both are on the same page because we're flip flopping the office right now. So we want to make sure we're both doing it exactly the same way. So that be less likely to make any, any type of mistakes. So we scan, this is how it works. We scan, we use that little barcode. We scan into the system that we have received the application. So on the 21st of July, which is next Tuesday, the clearinghouse is going to collect all that information, the people who want to vote by paper ballot. And they are going to mail the ballots to our residents who have applied for them. Then the residents are going to mail the ballot to us. In which case we now use that scanner and the barcode and we tell the clearinghouse or we tell the system that the, the state system that we have received the ballot. So that every piece of paper is accounted for. That's how this is supposed to work.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Dan. So Carla, was there any circumstance? I assume the answer is no, but I just was thinking about it. Was there any, was there any circumstance in which we could determine as a town that we did not feel it was safe to open a polling place for our poll workers in our community? And therefore mandate absentee ballots in their entirety? Was there any, was there any ability to do that or the state just said you have to open up a polling place?
I, I don't believe that as a town, we have the authority to make that decision. If we had a real, if we became the epicenter, maybe they would say something, but I don't, I don't think so. I think it's, um, yeah, I don't think we have the authority to do that.
Thank you.
Carla, I have a question, Dan.
Yep.
And again, this is just procedural and just because of the numbers of ballots that you're talking about. This is a primary. It is only, or you want to go into who can vote at the primary? What if someone wants to change affiliation to vote in the primary? Uh, and is it too late? And I, if you could just kind of touch some of those kinds of areas.
Okay. So that's a very good question. The rules that govern changing parties have remained the same. They have not changed according to the pandemic. So some people who return their applications to receive a ballot thought they might be someone of another party. Because, you know, so we've had to contact a few people and just say, you know, you're an independent. If you want to change and vote, if you want to change, I shouldn't say independent, I should say unaffiliated. If you're unaffiliated and you want to change, there's a cutoff date. There is a cutoff date and I don't have those memorized because there's a cutoff date. I think it's 30, 90 days or three months in order to change from a Republican to a Democrat and then vote in the Democratic primary or vice versa. You have to do that well in advance.
Carla, Jack is here. He was going to furnish those.
Can I interrupt, Carla?
Yes.
The, for, if a member of a major party, which would be Republican, Democrat, and includes independent, which is an actual, actual party in Connecticut, they have 90 days before an election, which they, if, once they hit 90 days, they can't change. And unaffiliated can basically come in the Friday before, or the Monday before the election and change. So they can change anytime.
And there's the, there's a situation where somebody's just moved to town since the cutoff. And they can register, but Jack and I found one who recently, you know, they moved from one Connecticut town to Hebron, a Connecticut town, and we need to find out. They were, they were, what were they, Jack? Registered as an?
I think it was one, of course, there's been, there's been quite a few of them, you know, and, uh.
Yeah. So I think that this particular one was, was registered as an independent and wanted to register either as a Republican or a Democrat and vote in the primary. And we have to ask that question of the state. Because even you could read all the books and you still need, you still need the state to answer that.
The problem is Connecticut's the only state that has an actual political party called the Independent Party. And that shouldn't be allowed because, uh, most people who register independent actually mean unaffiliated. And they're supposed to check no on the, when they select parties on a registration card. Some people will check no and write independent. And we've been told as long as they put an independent down there, you have to register them as an independent. And I used to call people up and explain that to them. I was basically told through people at the Secretary of State's office, you know, don't mess around with that. Independent is a political party and they like to sue people. So, you know, keep your mouth shut about that stuff. So I don't, I don't, no longer tell people, you know. Actually, if they actually come into the office, very few people do that any longer. But I will, you know, depending on how I read the person, I will explain that to them. But, uh, uh, I think there were 17,000 people in Connecticut registered on the Independent Party. And I've asked, you know, experienced registrars, how many actually think? And I get numbers like, you know, three to 10,000, maybe 3,000 to 10,000 are actually know that they're independent, but the, the others all think they're not affiliated. So there's a problem. It's, it's a Connecticut problem. But one of the other problems, I was very happy with the Republican primary because the only name on the ballot is, is Trump naturally. And some guy from California named Rocky DeFuentes, who in 2016 was a Democrat and he was on the ballot against Hillary. He likes to, you know, uh, he, he doesn't get any votes, but he likes to run for president. And, but we now have the second congressional district, which is Joe Courtney's district. There were two Republicans vying in the primary to run against him. So fortunately I haven't seen much in the newspaper, so I don't think too many people will be coming out in order to vote for either one of them. So we probably gonna keep, you know, low Republican numbers.
Well, things keep going. Rocky may win.
Yeah, that's a possibility. Yeah. When it was running against Hillary, there was some portion about if it was actually an American citizen. So I don't know if that.
So, uh, so Carla, you're saying that they can change party affiliation up until when?
If you're changing from a major, if you're, if, if I'm a Democrat and I want to change my affiliation to Republican, I, I would have had to do that three months ago.
Right. But how about the, the independent?
So now.
Independent is a major party.
Independent is considered a major party. So if you want to go from an independent to a Democrat or Republican, that's also three months ago.
Okay, then it'd be the.
Unaffiliated. If you are an unaffiliated voter and want to vote in the primary, you have, you can still, you still have time to change your party and to change your, go from unaffiliated to affiliate, right? Up until, Jack, did you say the Friday before?
I think it's a Friday before. It might be the Monday before. I'm not positive, but.
Yeah.
Now, would that be, would that be done via a phone call to set an appointment? Or are you, are we doing walk-ins now to the town hall?
Well, right now, they could, they can do that online through the state system, the state system that we're talking about. Or they could, they could mail in a voter registration card or they could come in. So there's three ways they can do it. They can do it by mail. They can do it electronically or they could do it in person.
But, but with the town hall being open now, they could, at least in Hebron.
Yes.
I mean, there are some town halls that are still closed.
Right.
So.
Well, yes. Well, we have, um, I gave out a couple voter registration cards last, well, actually Monday or Tuesday this week. People coming in and just wanting to take care of business. So, you know, I'm, I'm not opening my office to the public, but I meet people at the door and give, talk to them through the window and give them what they need. And, uh, that was, that was on the list this week.
Okay. And that's kind of where I'm getting at is, you know, if people want to do this or some of the parameters around what can be done. Yeah, quite literally, as I say, I go to some town halls to pull, pull permits. And some of them you can't get in, some of them you have to call, some of them it's online only. It's, it's a mixed bag depending on the town.
People that are, um, the people that need our services, you know, and the town clerks, or I can speak for Jack, the registrars, because we work hand in hand. Whatever they need, nobody, some people might be a little inconvenienced by moments. That's about it. Everybody is getting what they need.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? Guess not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not sure where we are on the program.
Okay. So next would be going, the normal agenda would be the draft agenda for the August 6th, 2020 meeting.
Okay. So again, anybody, you know, try to get the requests or information or whatever in so that it can put, be put on the agenda. So then we have our, our consent agenda. And on this one, we really only have the approval of the minutes, I believe. So to make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda item and motion contained therein, uh, it would be the approval of the minutes of June 18th, 2020, our regular meeting. Uh, did anybody have any changes or additions, deletions? Gail, John? Peter, Mark?
Gail abstains as I was not present.
No, I have nothing, Mr. Chair. All good.
Yes, John?
All good.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, so, uh, hearing no discussion, uh, motion, John?
Aye.
Gail is abstaining.
Yes.
Peter?
Peter Kasper, aye.
Mark?
Mark, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Now we're getting into the liaison reports. And, uh, actually start out with Andy.
Okay, um, the Ram Campus Project is, with the weather being good, it's going as scheduled. No major surprises. Uh, they're moving right along. They're got pouring a lot of concrete. So steady as she goes, just staying in, within the, you know, the forecast of the schedule they provided us. We have weekly, uh, updated meetings with the contractor, the engineers in the town and the school. So that seems, um.
to be going well. While we're under this liaison reports, one of the things I failed to mention on the reopening of the town hall, I was kind of rushing because I had some new items is when we reopen on the August sixth, we're also permitted to have in-person meetings. But I wanted to bring that up at this meeting to get the board's pleasure. You would still have to wear masks, even if we met at the library. We would have to if we had in-person meetings, we would have to wear a mask. So for this meeting, I talked to the chairman and just said, why don't we continue for this one to move forward with virtual, but I think you guys should decide at some point how you want to proceed.
Well, we can discuss it quickly. My only concern is to how to set the distance up to get the camera to be able to pick us up. You know, when you figure from from what we were told for distance requirements between people, I don't see it happening in the meeting room at the town hall. There's just not not the area to to have us spread out. The library, if we did it there, we would virtually be going from the kitchen wall to the entry door, or we would have to set the room up and go along that sidewall, which would be the I if hopefully I'm not wrong in my direction, the west wall to try to set up that way, and I'm not sure what that would entail. Speaker or the microphone system and everything is not over there. You know, the other thing is, you know, being, you know, health conscious, I don't want to force anybody into a in-person meeting that they may feel uncomfortable as an in-person meeting. So I'll I'm easy whichever way. So anybody have anything, chime in, please.
Yeah. This works.
Something too.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Dan. Sorry, you can go first.
All right, I don't at this time see an in-person meeting for health reasons. We have to have a mask, which makes it that much more difficult for the sound system to pick us up. We have to be spaced out. Like you said, Dan, it would drive the camera crazy. If we have guests, you're adding still more people in. I think people have under these circumstances, people have more access to speak to us at our meeting if we're on virtual reality rather than trying to do it in a in a room. And I would be very concerned about doing it.
Dan?
Go ahead, Mark.
I agree one hundred percent with Gail, and I would add to that. There's no sense taking a risk and bringing us all together. I don't feel comfortable with that either. And the process that we've created is working fine. So 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 why endanger us and make people feel uncomfortable? I let's keep it going the way it is.
Dropping down, John, since you're the next one down.
Yeah, I I you know, I I don't I don't I don't know, actually. I mean, the way things move, you know, with the we are, we have a low infection rate here, but you look at California and who knows what will happen in a month. I would say that we should think about it hard because, you know, we are the leaders of the community. If we're not meeting in person, we can't ask the schools to convene. We can't ask kids to go back, right? So it's not just us. We're we're leaders and you know, it's it's a decision that we should take with some. I don't know. Like I said, I I I'm watching every day to see what's happening with the country. It's moving so fast. And I can't believe that we're going to be an island out. I see I see us. I hope, you know, I hope that we are not affected, but.
Yeah, we did, John. It looks like it'll move to have a little protected area soon.
Yeah.
You you mentioned the schools. I I work in different schools. They are spending all kinds of of money and resources trying to prepare. I do have not seen a plan yet that, in my opinion, is really realistic and practicable. They are all so fraught with either untenable requirements, spacing, I I just don't see it being functional. You know, it's it it barely works on paper. I don't think it's going to work in reality, is is my thought. But I'm sorry, Peter, I should have let you go first.
No, no, actually, this is helpful to me because I my first reaction was really where where Mark and Gail and Gail stood, and and that's where I lean. But I think John makes a really good point in that if we're saying like the open for business thing, and I'm going, hey, come out to the businesses. You know, I'm not going, you know, that sort of thing, you know, if and I see, especially my kids, I see they're starting to forget because we feel safe. So we're starting to get lax. And so they're pretty managed to saying, listen, if you're going to meet, this is how it's done. The Johnson, as a leadership group, this is how it's done. Look at the spacing, look at the aggravation, but we're showing how it's should be done, because this is the easy way. And I my first reaction, my sort of I'm changing as I'm going here, is I think we should at least be thinking about what John's saying, because we're saying it's safe, we're saying we're open for business, we're saying the town's open. So how do we demonstrate a safe meeting format? How do we demonstrate that we're going to practice what we preach? This is the way it has to be done to be safe, to protect ourselves. If you do need to meet, it needs to look like this. So I think I think that's something that we should at least entertain and interject into the dialogue. My first reaction was where where Mark and Gail was is, hey, it ain't broke. We don't need to fix it. But wait a minute. We're transitioning as a community, so do we need to transition as well? So I think that's a good point, John, you make, and we should at least keep that in the dialogue.
I think we'll have to get the sneeze guards for all of us then, just like the the doctor, just like the library, the town office building. They'll have the plexiglass up.
Well, you know, in terms of flexibility, and I think that the schools are going to come up with some sort of flexibility, and there's going to be options for people. I mean, maybe we have that option, you know, where we have the more vulnerable of us, and there are, you know, I mean, we know that the COVID nineteen is not friendly to older people. Have the option to to zoom in and and other people that are more comfortable can go to the meeting.
I don't know. I have I have a follow-up comment to that. The the town is not going to fail if we don't meet. If businesses don't open, even the risks they're taking, they'll fail. We're not going to fail. We're the analogy that we're like a business. We're not. We can meet like this, and everything will go on just fine. If the businesses don't get people coming in, they're going to fail, and their livelihood is going to be taken away. No one's livelihood is affected by us meeting like this. And to talk about the school, when I get to the Ram part, I'll talk about the school, because ask kids to come back to school is being completely offensive to a lot of parents, and over thirty percent have opted not to send their kids back so far. So it's also irresponsible to tell kids to come back to school, and I'll talk about that when I do my Ram comments after.
Yeah, and as the liaison to the Hebron Board of Ed, yes, they're working on their plan, and that was going to be part of my report.
Yeah. I'm not saying.
I like that meeting in person, but I am concerned.
I I would say.
I think we're trimming access from the the public who may be have to walk into where we're all spaced out and en masse and the like. At least this way they can see what we look like.
Good point.
I like like I said, if if there are six-year-olds going back to school, it's it'll be hard. I I I think.
But they but they shouldn't be going back to school, John. They should not be going back to school.
Right. Well, that's that's I'm not I'm not I don't have. Like I said, I don't have a strong position on that right right this second. I'm going to listen to what the the Boards of Education say and and see what happens, but you know, I like I said, I think we should be open to some sort of flexible format. People can, we could have a Zoom format and an in-person format. I mean, I I hope the schools have that option. I hope they have distance learning if they if they go back. I hope that people have options to have distance learning and and in person and but I don't know. Like like I said, it's it's July, what? What day is today? July?
Sixteenth.
And and by August thirtieth, you know, things will could have changed dramatically in Connecticut. We saw what's happening in Florida. I mean, it's outrageous.
Yeah, our next meeting is August sixth. Yeah, so again, this is something we really need to keep keep on on the topic. Keep our minds open and really kind of watch where the this virus seems to be heading.
Yeah.
You know, I really am holding out that, you know, some of these companies are stating that they were hoping to have a vaccine this month, and I would sure be interested in seeing something, because until that happens, the world is going to be in a state of flux, and worldwide, COVID is making a resurgence. It's until until a vaccine is is manufactured, this may end up being with us and who knows how long. But we had to be cognizant, as I say, of everybody's health concerns as well. Okay, Andy, did you have any other?
Yeah, so I'm going to need to know what you want to do with the August sixth meeting. Is that going to be for right now, we'll keep it on the agenda or?
I would at this point, I would state that we keep it this way, or I would suggest that we keep it this way. But again, we need to keep our minds open. I'm actually going to try to get into the library, do some measuring to see just how mathematically it would work. And talk about, is there a way that you know, if if two or three of us were to meet there, could the rest of it be, you know, teleconference? And these are all things I I do not know. This is not my field. But, you know, we'll come up with some options and then discuss it.
Okay, yeah. All right, so sorry to jump off. I got off that agenda too soon. I wanted to know that. But going back to the liaison reports, we're finalizing the bond package for the shore project. And we're going to be, I think we're going to close in September on that. So I'll keep you posted, and then Harvey Lane give you an update at the next meeting. We'll know more. So those two projects are moving forward.
With the Ram project, any surprises yet on that, or are things pretty much the way that they had anticipated?
Yeah, no, no major hurdles, a couple small things. Here's irrigation line. It was right under the road. That was only a couple feet deep. They had to relocate bury that deeper, and they hit something that wasn't marked out, nothing major. And we repaired that. So I think one more tree had to come out that wasn't specified, things things like that, but nothing nothing earth shattering.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, is that it on on your topics?
That's it. That's for me.
I'll move across. Gail?
All right, the Hebron Board of Ed, as I mentioned before, they had a retreat last week, and they worked on a vision statement and a mission statement for the schools. There is a task force of about thirty people that has been working on reentry plans for the upcoming school year. They should be releasing that next week, but as been mentioned by a couple of people here, there are many teachers and many students that do not wish to return to school. So they're having to do a lot of multitasking. The Douglas Library, open to the public, and many people have been so happy about that. It's open three days a week with limited hours on those days. On the other days, they have curbside pickup still available. Children's programming for the summer, which, as you know, is always a big big draw for parents. It's going to be virtual now. It'll be on Zoom, and they've got four programs coming up. So those would be on Thursdays at one o'clock from July July sixteenth, July twenty-third, August sixth, and August thirteenth. The Commission on Aging Senior Center. Air filtration systems have been ordered for the two Dolaride buses. They will incorporate a HEPA filter, a UVC light, and photocatalyst, which captures the air and acts to kill virus bacteria, et cetera. That means that they will be able to use those buses again. Dolaride is is continuing to provide essential services, so they'll be much more useful now. The North Central Area on Aging continues their grocery delivery program for those over age sixty. And financial assistance is available to help pay for the groceries. Anyone who needs more information should call the Senior Center. That's it, Dan.
Thank you. Mark?
I have some similar experiences to what Gail's reporting. I'm on the Ram Reopening Committee and the Safety and Security Committee. So the mandate from the Governor and the Commissioner of Education is that we're going back to school with full attendance. Every kid's going back to school with a mask on, and somehow you're going to manage social distancing, which seems an inordinate risk. So that's where we're at right now. We have to create a hybrid plan, too, and also be ready if we're not going to school at all. So there's three separate plans being created, but the number one one right now is we're going back at full attendance with as many mitigation standards as you can come up with. The mandates are a kid has to wear a mask all day in school. I think Dan said earlier that that's probably not practicable, and it probably isn't, because even in surveying kids, teenagers at Ram said, as soon as we're not supervised, we're taking the mask off. Just to give you a picture of what that looks like, it's twenty kids in a classroom spaced six feet apart with a mask on, with a teacher in the front, with a mask on, teaching them. In some of the classrooms, you can't open the windows in them. So if you want to sit in there, you're way more courageous than I am. So this is what we're looking at right now. And we sent out surveys, well, I didn't send out surveys, Ram sent out surveys. In excess of twenty-five parents so far have responded, they're not sending your kids back. The school's responsible for providing virtual education and in-school education. Sixty percent of parents said they're not letting their kids ride the bus because as of now, the state allows full capacity on a bus with your mask on. So parents aren't going for that. Teachers are not very comfortable with this at all, but they're dedicated educators, but they're frightened, and some have said that are older, they can't work under these circumstances. So this is where we're at with all of this, and it's, you know, everybody wants your kid to go back to school. It's not what you want. It's what's safe. So my stepson's a senior, and Jessica and I aren't sending them back. Not not right now. So it's this this is this is disturbing to me on many levels. So everybody's grappling with it. It ran from the board to the parents, the teachers, the administration, and right now, who's know who knows what's going to happen.
Is it true? I had heard that if one COVID nineteen case gets discovered, if you will, in school, they close the school down?
They haven't. They haven't said that directly, Dan, in all the meetings I've been to. I haven't seen that. The Governor and Commissioner came out with a fifty-page report, and I actually read the whole thing. They didn't. They didn't really address that specific yet, but you have to set up two separate staging areas for kids who get sick. They go to these areas, and then they're escorted out to meet their parent in the parking lot. There's things very specific like that. Right now, you can't have the cafeteria, so they're going to be wheeling lunch to you in your classroom. And many people are uncomfortable with that. They have shortened the date to twelve fifty. They have shortened the date to 12:55 though. So school will be released at 12:55. Other than that, there's some changes in scheduling. So kids can stay in their own little cohort where they're not mixing as much. But they're still going from class to class. It's not like the elementary school where you stay in one class all day. The kids are still changing venues, changing classes.
Mark, if you, if we're responsible to teach them virtually and in person, so does that mean every classroom has to be set up with technology? So that student at home is seeing what the students in person are seeing, or is that still not been developed yet?
They're, they're trying to develop that, Pete, but as you sense right now, that's a very difficult thing to develop. And the one thing that I thought, but you know, I haven't been an educator in a long time, that they would have a teacher in the classroom being filmed and the kids there are getting the teacher in person. And the kids at home would be getting the class real time with their teacher making the lecture. And each actually be able to ask questions. But they're saying that teachers really aren't skilled in doing both of those at the same time. So I, I don't know how a teacher is gonna teach the 30. I, I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be more than the 30 that responded in the survey or 25. But they're, they're working all of those things out. I can say, you know, Mr. Leslie's fantastic and the administration's fantastic, but there, there's a lot of things and obstacles to overcome. I, I don't care how bright you are or dedicated you are.
That's, that's, that's a mountain.
That's a mountain.
Oh, my goodness. Wow.
A lot of our assumptions, just every day, there's a, there's new data that comes out. And one of the assumptions was that children don't get it. And CDC said it was 2% or less. Now they're coming out from California and Mississippi. I, I just, somebody just sent me this. More than 10% of the new cases are from children. So.
All right.
As I say, although it is not, in, in a sense, our responsibility, I feel that we have to at least be up to speed and, you know, we need to work with the Boards of Ed. Uh, this is a partnership. You know, us, the town and, and the town leadership, you know, being us, the Board of Selectmen and the schools. And, um, I really feel that we need to make sure that we are communicating with them to, to have a, a at least a flavor or a feeling for, um, you know, this is going to be a, a joint effort. You know, townwide to handle whatever we're gonna have coming down the pike.
So should we be doing more about that intersection? Because I think, I think you're right. I mean, if I, if I, as I think about our role is, you know, one of the most important things that we need to focus on is the safety of our community. And if, if a school environment increases a hazard for the community, just say worst case scenario, as you're describing, Mark, all these kids come back. And, and all of a sudden, these kids, cause my fears, I'm, I do a lot to make sure that I'm safe. But my kids are older and they go to the beach and, you know, now they're bringing it back to me. So if our schools spiked, they're bringing it home, they're bringing it into our stores, they're bringing it into our community. So, um, I think it's good that we're paying attention.
Andy?
I don't know if anybody saw the River East, but this was taken up by Russ Melman at the Chatham Health District. And he's very uncomfortable with it. And he's been on these conference calls with the Region Three Director and the Governors and the Chairman of the Board of Ed. And, uh, you know, this is his profession. This is what he's done his whole career. And he puts some pretty good terminology in that article that was in the River East, if you saw it on the front page, uh, last week. He, you know, he doesn't want to call the schools incubators, but if you're putting that many kids into the area and you're gonna have, you know, teachers and bus drivers and monitors and stuff, it's, it's a recipe for spread. And they have some, uh, concerns and they, they vetted those in the paper and they're vetting them with the, the state on a weekly basis.
Is there anything we should be doing as a Board of Selectmen to voice or our support or concern over something like that? To, should we lend a voice to that? And maybe obviously not back to Ram, but to different avenues, Andy? Is there something we should be doing? Other towns lending their voice to this dialogue that aren't the Boards of Ed?
It, it's only my opinion. I, I've, I've done what I do my whole career. I look to the professionals when, when something arises. And that's his profession. And he's only been with us a short time, but he's done a very good job. And I haven't found him to be incompetent in any way regarding these issues. Uh, very matter of fact and actually willing to make statements on his own. So it was a nice, it was a well-written article with concerns that we should probably follow up with, with him. And I think he's our advocate, well, with his position in the Health Director of our district. I think we stay in close contact with him and I can ask him for updates to give to the Board of Selectmen if that works.
I, I, I feel we do have a responsibility and I'm hoping that the Boards of Ed will quote unquote, keep us in the loop and look to us as a, a, a friend and a resource. Because I think collectively, we are all going to be in this somehow together. And we all have some sort of, of part to play in this. I, I, I don't know what that part is. But I feel that, you know, this, this is far bigger than any one entity. And we all need to be working on it together.
So Vandy, could we get, could we keep that on the agenda, then updates from you on, on that? I think that's probably pretty important that we get even more, more tuned in to what you're hearing and speaking with, with him on, uh, somehow. Because, um, I think we, we, we could see some point, Dan, to your point, where we have to take a stronger position, not so much to get in, in the way of the educator, the, the RAM and the Hebron Board, but to think about the bounds of our community, who we need to be a voice for as well.
So, so Andy, everybody's back at work in the town hall? Is that right?
If, if they're not back at work, they're working remotely. So you heard Carla today? Because there's only two of them and with the election coming up, they don't want to take a chance of both of them getting sick. So they're staggering, but the office is open every day. All the offices are open every day. And I want to say 95% of them are fully staffed.
Okay, so now, I mean, the more I think about this, the more I, I'm like, we're asking the town employees to work in the offices and we're not meeting in person? Is that, is that, is that right? I mean, is that a right thing for us to be doing?
I, I leave that up to you guys. It's an option that, that's out there with most municipalities, uh, doing it both ways. So I'm, I'm not the authority on that. It, it, you are allowed now to, um, meet in person if you can do it safely and follow the guidelines. I think the issue is, can we guarantee that we're gonna follow it safely and do the guidelines with the areas we have, especially in the library? You don't know, I know there's not, normally not a lot of attendance at our meetings, but per se, if something did happen, we would be in violation. But I think, I think that's a decision the Board of Selectmen has to make.
But, but there's no office in the town hall where six or seven people are in there at the same time. That's what our, our Board of Selectmen meeting would be. So the, the, the correlation there is invalid.
Well, we would follow the guidance of the CDC of six distancing and wear masks. And, and, um, uh, you know, I'm coming.
Why would you, why would you do that if you don't have to? To make what statement? To make a statement that we're what, we're all gonna gather and we're gonna talk and we could do it without that and create a risk? The example should be to not create a risk and conduct business without creating a risk.
We've, we've made the statement basically to our town employees that it is safe. And I, I'm just gonna say, if we're leaders, we should, we should stick with our word, not, we shouldn't do what's, you know, comfortable. But I would say if we should have the, the option for, for an in-place meeting for people who feel comfortable in going and people that want to zoom in, uh, have that and that make that available to the public too. You know, as, as, as a leader in the community, it's, it's also what you, you know, your behavior is, is important, you know, it, 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 you know, you have to stick with what, you know, what you, what you say, you have to follow what you say. And, you know, I don't, I don't, at this point, with, with the rates that we have right now, I'm, I'm comfortable meeting in person. I'm comfortable with, with the town employees being in, 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 you know, working. And, you know, you have to walk the walk, I think.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable. So to say that we're saying that all the town employees are safe, that me as a cop is safe, that all the people in the town hall are safe, their paramedics are safe, they're not safe. They're going to work and they're taking a risk. You try to mitigate risk, but they're all still taking risks. A teacher will be taking a huge risk. A student will be taking a huge risk. Andy takes a risk when he walks in there and deals with the public. I take a risk every day and the, the gentleman that Andy cited, I was talking about, I'm trying to do fingerprints for people when they're saying I'm not supposed to. And he told me, you probably shouldn't do that. You shouldn't be standing next to somebody, even if you both have your mask on, taking fingerprints. So he gave me a less risky thing, do it for 10 minutes, take an hour off. They shouldn't, you shouldn't be near the person more than 10 minutes. And these are experts talking, John. That has nothing to do with courage. It has to do with sensibility.
I'm not an expert. I just know that this Board of Selectmen has approved the employees going back to work.
And we have, we haven't said it was safe. We, we're, they are going back to work to do their job. Cause they're committed employees, but it doesn't mean it's safe.
Well, I think that's implied in there, isn't it?
It shouldn't be implied. It's a risk. You think it's safe for me to go to work every day and go into people's homes?
I.
You think it's safe for a paramedic to go into a COVID home with just his mask on? It's not. It's a risk where you try to mitigate risk. It's not safe.
But you're talking about your differentiation, like Mark, as an essential worker, right? Uh, is you have to, by its nature, that person takes a greater risk because they have to administer medical care or, or police services. And so the argument that, or the discussion that is to, if maybe at some point we discuss the differentiation between what's essential and what's not essential. It isn't essential for Elaine to be in work and the technology is there. To your point, Mark, why does she need to be there? You unfortunately have to arrest people. So you have to, we need, we need you to do that or, you know, your, your role, whether you do it or not is up to you. But in terms of the role of a, of a police officer, a, a, and emergency medical people and fire and, and all the essential services, unfortunately, they have to take a greater risk, those that perform that job, because they, they're, it, that's, there's nothing else really, they have to take precautions. But by your, by the nature of your job, you come in contact with the public, whereas someone in the town hall doesn't have to.
Um, I'd like to interject something here because we're, we're all repeating ourselves over. Why don't we have the next meeting on August 6th, I believe? The way we're doing this one now, and be prior to that, gather more information from Russ and other people. So that we have that, the informed information from those people who have the basis to give us that information, such as Russ at Chatham Health. Because right now, we're not.
We're just going around.
We all have, we're just repeating ourselves. We have, we each have an opinion.
And, and again.
And with the schools, by the way, next week, we will have the, um, the information from Hebron Board of Ed as to how they're handling it. We might want to throw that into the discussion.
When are they coming out with?
They're, they're, oh, as I said before, they, they, they have a 30-member task force and they, um, should be releasing that report next week, around the middle or the end of the week.
Okay, but, but Gail, they're, they're not the deciders of what the schools are gonna do. The governor and the commissioner are.
That's right.
So he gives the mandate and they have some flexibility to find mitigating factors of how to do it. But they can't say, we want to go to a hybrid system or we don't want to go to school. So what the Boards of Eds are kind of powerless in this, because they have to do what the state tells them to do.
Yeah, and I have, I have young grandchildren. I'm very concerned about.
Yeah, I, I'm, hey, me too, Gail.
At, at this point, I believe that we are going to meet the same as we are doing now. Uh, at least for the August 6th meeting. And we can continue the conversation on there, uh, try to get some more facts. But I'll say that I've been in more houses in the last two months, uh, doing emergency calls and repairs and you name it. Than I was in probably the preceding six months. And I use masks and I got spray bottles with, um, fungicide or some sort of side. That I found out, by the way, do not try to drive and spray the bottle because it gets all over the windshield. Not good.
Good to know.
Thank you for that, Dan.
Finish up, everybody.
To needlessly put ourselves in harm's way is not good common sense either. But as I say, we'll, we'll carry this on the 6th. And hopefully we'll have some more direction from hopefully people who have, uh, expert knowledge in these fields. Okay, uh, you, you all said Gail, Mark, uh, so we're on to John. Rick, John?
Okay, uh, Hebron, um, the Hebron Water Project, uh, goes on, they should be out, they will be out by August 1st. There was a setback. Uh, there's some defective piping, but it was discovered and replaced. They did get the pipes for Yukon, so that project is, is going. And, um, they haven't decided about the replacement of the fire, fire, um, stuff. So, uh, I guess that'll be decided in the next meeting or so. So, and that's all I have.
Peter?
Parks and Rec, uh, Andy covered the most important takeaway from that meeting this week and Board of Finance did not meet, um, between our last session and now. So, um, I have nothing to, to add.
Okay, and then, uh, I have a letter I'm gonna be reading. It's from the Hebron Historic Properties Commission. Uh, and I believe that, uh, it got sent out to everyone. Uh, hello, Andy and the Board of Selectmen. As you are aware, the Hebron Historic Properties Commission is planning, uh, an event to honor the greatest generation. Please put Sunday, August 23rd on your calendars and plan to attend the program outside the observation post starting at 2 o'clock. Uh, the 75th anniversary program came about when Hebron was chosen as the location of the second congressional district's Rosie the Riveter Memorial Rose Garden. We were selected to do our very special sole surviving civilian aircraft observation post. The President of the American Rosie the Riveter's Association, Gretchen Caulfield, will be present at, uh, for the event. In addition to the Rosies, the event will be recognizing all those who contributed during World War II. Our home front workers and residents, as well as those who served in the military, will be acknowledged with high esteem. To help in honoring these individuals, uh, we have invited the elected officials, Boy and Girl Scouts, members of the American Legion Post 95, local musical talent and others to participate in the program. Uh, we hope that you will share this occasion with us and please invite others to do so. Thanks, Mary Ann Foot. P.S. We will be asking people to bring blankets in to help keep the proper distance and to wear masks throughout the program. So at this point, they are still planning on this moving forward. It'll be taking place on the lawn to the north of the, uh, town hall. And, uh, they have invited dignitaries to come. And hopefully it should be a good program. They, they got music of the era. We're trying now to do posters of a lot of the Rosies. It was, it was quite an effort that this country put forth. Yeah, and, uh, we even have got, and whether or not they'll actually be able to get people who actually worked in that building. But we do have, uh, video, uh, that was taken when that building was first, uh, dedicated and moved from, actually it was across the street at, at the church. But originally, it's, it's original location was up on Robinson Hill. And it was a collaborative effort between Columbia and Hebron and many of the, of the, uh, And many, uh, the, of the wives of the soldiers and, and I'm assuming probably husbands also who were here stateside, uh, would go up in that waiting and looking for potential enemy aircraft. And this was before radar had become established and, uh, up and running. And, uh, it's quite a, quite a building to have something that dates back from that vintage. So, and that's all I have. So who's gonna make the motion?
I'm always good for making the motion to adjourn at 9:12.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.